So tonight's meeting is via Zoom, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link, which is in our agenda, which is on our website. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may follow and there's a number to dial in. So tonight's meeting, just to let everybody know, we're not taking any public input. It's really just to discuss recommendations that our planning board has for the Board of Appeals meeting on the 28th. And our comments should stay specifically to things we can't control, which is safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, and in relation to adjacent streets, properties, or improvements, and B, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage refuge and other wastes in the methods for surface and stormwater drainage, provisions for off-street parking and loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the building and related uses to the lot on the lot. I'd also like to add snow storage to that from the plans. So with that, I'd like to take roll call. Matthew Lowery. Joanne Schooler.
Present.
Okay. Megan Menasali.
Present.
Hello. And I'd like to note that Erin Kokinda, our community and economic development director is here. And thank you, Susan, for making it tonight, our clerk. So with that, item number two, 200 to 400 Conopawa Parkway, reviewing possible questions and comments for the Board of Appeals. So I'm going to stop my share. And one more comment. We, we, actually Erin's been doing some work to talk to the other boards to try to get PDFs and everything. So there's been a bunch of emails going back and forth. And thank you so much, Erin, for taking the time to do that. And I have to say for, I'm pretty confident for future plans and developments such as this in front of our board and the ZBA, it looks like we're going to have PDFs. So the PDFs will probably be posted to the boards, the board that will be reviewing those drawings or plans. So that's our goal. And Erin's been pushing it pretty good. So thank you. Um, I'd like to start tonight by saying we appreciate all these drawings. And we do have large scale and mini sets, which helps a lot because I took the mini set with me to review, which helped me make some more comments in all the drainage as well as transportation. So Matt, because you are, you probably have the most, the best eye for finding this and the most experience out of the four board members, I'd like you to share any recommendations or comments that you have.
Um, the, obviously, the biggest thing I have is format of the plans, again, being paper copies. Uh, the other thing is, as I'm reviewing the existing additions plans, it's apparent, it's pretty clear that existing grades on the site are minimal and extremely hard to read. Um, and I'm not sure what the point of that was, but it's, you just can't read anything. So for me, one of the biggest issues I see is that there's going to be a lot of fill brought onto the site. Uh, it's looking like at least four to five feet of fill. More like four evenly across the entire parcel is going to be brought in here. So that is a lot of material that needs to be brought onto the site. Uh, I understand why it needs to be done. You need to raise the site up to have some separation from groundwater, but uh, this is going to be, this is going to raise the site up quite a bit. And um, I don't know, it's, to me, it seems excessive for this, but uh, that'd be basically my comment is that I'm concerned with the amount of fill coming onto the site. Besides that, you know, before it's really vetted out, I really don't have anything else at this point. So.
All right. And I also had a problem reading the existing contours and couldn't quite understand from the elevations how high this would be going up. So you're figuring four to five feet raised up past that first row of buildings and back to the parking garage? Is that what you were thinking?
For the most part, yeah. So when you look at the rain gardens, um, the rain guards look to be basically, the bottom of those are going to be basically at grade right now.
Right.
Uh, the infiltration system they're putting in, basically, they're going to go almost constructed onsite and then fill all around it. So obviously, they got a lot of material to remove from here because it's all pavement. Uh, there's a lot of rubble from the building that all needs to be hauled off. And then all new fill needs to be brought in to bring it up. So.
Right.
It's going to be quite a change. Uh, what I ended up doing was the existing additions plan. We did get a PDF originally when the preliminary subdivision plan was submitted to us.
Right.
So I went back and looked at that. And even on that, it's the existing elevations are basically illegible. So. It doesn't really help out too much. So. I, I, I do have kind of a, a question. I know previously if people wanted to review plans, they would be on file at the town clerk's office. Is that still the case right now?
It's not something, Erin, if you want to unmute and answer that?
Yes, they should be there if anyone wants to review them.
And would they be, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
So do you need to make an appointment to go see them or how, what's the process for people viewing these? Because they're huge and they're not easy to really read. So um, I'm always for making things open for everyone, but it's kind of a hard, hard for people to actually review these plans and see what's going on out there.
So yes, a town hall is now open from eight till two or 2:30. I can double check on the two or 2:30. Um, and they should be in there, but I think also going back to what Bill was saying earlier about trying to get them online posted with the PDFs. But we want to try to make it as easy as possible for people to see. So um, if they went into town hall, they should be able to see them right now. And um, there's ongoing conversations for it to be put online.
Thanks, Erin. Um, we're hoping and we're hoping that we have the PDFs uploaded before the ZBA meeting. That will give some time. I know there's a little bit of back and forth to see where they're going to be loaded and up, but um, I, I don't know. We'll, we'll figure that out. And I don't, there's no way to really alert anybody. But if you want to go to the Wakefield Board of Appeals website, and I believe that's where the PDFs would reside.
I guess also, I think with COVID, we've all had to look at our bylaws and how the rules and regulations are running. And I think right now we're looking at to update it as we move forward because we understand before, you know, it was a given that you'd go in town hall to see plans, but we know even after COVID, after, you know, all done after that, then things are going to be much different. So that's the conversation we're having. And hopefully we can figure that out sooner than later.
Thanks, Matt. Um, Joanne, do you have any comments regarding the items that, if anything, we could recommend to um, the Board of Appeals? You're, I'm sorry, Joanne, you're on mute.
In terms of the special permit process for this, can you explain, Bill, a little bit to us and to the people on the call? There's a number of public people here as well. Um, can you explain the special permit process and how that's going to work on this development? Because it is residential in an area that requires special permits for the residential development. Um, can you explain what the ZBA is going to look at in order to give those special permits? What the criteria is? You're on mute.
I know I had some background. There was some background noise earlier, so I went down and muted everybody. I think some of it was from the park too. So my understanding is that special permit granted by the Board of Appeals will include what we're talking about tonight, but it will also go into the aesthetics of the building, the heights of the building, the placement of the buildings, the traffic they'll take into consideration, engineering, DPW, any other type of recommendations coming into them. They'll also open it up to public hearings where they'll listen to anybody, any comments, whatever they have, and that would be their discussion. So the ZBA then takes all that information in and forms their opinion, and they vote on it, whether the special permit is granted or not.
Um, so what do you see our role in the special permit process as being?
Um, as I read earlier tonight, what we have as a planning board is we can go over those three items that I mentioned earlier, which is really about the safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic around Jason Streets, the sewage, the snow, the methods for surface and stormwater drainage, and let's see, unloading and loading of vehicles. Um, so that's pretty much what we can recommend. We don't have any other, we don't have another voice in this. What we do have a voice as public. You can attend the ZBA meetings and as a, as a citizen and speak your mind and share your thoughts.
Well, but is there a reason why the public can't share their thoughts here?
Yes. Because this isn't the correct forum for that.
Okay.
The ZBA will be making the decision on the special permit. We don't have any power to make a decision. We'll just be recommending. So tonight, no public comment whatsoever. It's really for our board to get together after we've had some time to review. And that was the reason for the special meeting was to give the board some time to review the drawings because it's a lot of material here and to come up with any recommendations that we would give to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. So um, my concern in terms of the development, one of them is the fact that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that would be in front of the development. So the first 75 feet from the lake is the town-owned property, which I assume the walkers would be traveling on?
Um, I wouldn't, I would say it's multimodal. I would say it's probably bikers, walkers, scooters, dog walkers, a lot of different paths. And I'm not sure if it's 75 feet all the way around. So I can't confirm that. But the existed from these proposed plans, and what I've noticed is the existing pathway does not change. The proposal also has a new walkway that would be closer to the three-story building that as far as I could tell from the scale from the buildings, it was about 150 feet to the northwest point, and that would be the closest that building is to the lake.
So are they planning on doing anything to the first 75 feet from the shore?
I'm not sure. It looks like there's some planting and lighting, but I don't think it gets into the municipal town-owned land. But that's something that would be a great comment or question that would come up at the ZBA meeting. I'm not sure if there's something you'd like to recommend about that.
Well, I'd like to recommend that it's town land, that they're not, they're not doing development on the land that's owned by the town.
Well, I don't think they can do that, but I think in another way, if it came up in front of the ZBA, that in order to do this, they can improve that pathway, improve the lighting and walking path. That's.
Yes, I guess the way to then, if we're asking questions that we want the ZBA to ask, we could ask them if CCNF is at the ZBA meetings, uh, what they're planning to do in those first 75 feet that are going to be advantageous to the pedestrian and bike traffic and townspeople.
Right. I didn't see any type of development inside that area whatsoever. So I think that's the answer. They don't have any plan for that.
So that would stay the same?
Um, yes. I, I hope that it's brought up at the ZBA meeting from the public, that there would be some type of.
There's a limited work line on the plan, so you can see where they're planning on, you know, doing all their work up until, so.
Yeah. And I don't think it's 75 feet straight across. I think it's, it's following a wavy line. I, is it sheet number three maybe that shows it? And then there's another layout plan, I think, on C1048. And this is all from the Allen and Major. They're very hard to read on the smaller plan. The larger plans, you can see it. But there's, as Matt said, they show their 50-foot front yard setback, and then there's another line for line of work. It's a really thick, dark dashed line.
Okay. Um, in terms of the parking that's planned, do we think there's enough parking allocated for the walkers and the people that are using that area right now today?
Okay, so today, I'm not, I'm confused about your question. You mean like today, is there enough parking for the walkers? I would say, yeah.
Well, I mean, the parking is obviously going to be for the development, right? For the residential.
So you mean the proposed, I'm sorry, you mean the proposed parking? Is there parking for the walkers? I did not see any designated areas for public parking for walkers. I might have missed it, but I didn't see any on these plans.
Okay, so that would be a concern that maybe we need to, to raise.
Um, I'm not sure about that. I think we need to think about, is there enough parking and circulation in this area for deliveries and drop-offs, which looks like it's going to happen from the existing parkway and/or the existing road, public road that goes around the back. I might be misspeaking by saying it's public, but the, the access of trucks and in and out of these parking areas, I believe, is what our planning board would be concerned with. Meaning if there was an obscured view where a car was turning out onto the main road that was blocked by a building or some planting, I think that's what our planning board would be concerned with. And looking at the landscape plans and the engineering plans, I didn't see any turns or blind spots that would cause any, or raise any flags for issues with pedestrians. I don't know if you found any or anybody else did. And just, just a quick background, what I do, Joanne, is I take the, the plan and I take a couple of different color pencils and markers, and I go through and I circle different areas that I'm quickly concerned about that might be pedestrian crossings or where I think people might jaywalk. And I think of those areas to where I, I look closer at them, then I'll go into the plans deeper to see what the plantings look like, what the, the curb height is, what the contours are, and where the buildings sit back. And I really think about those sightlines to see if there's any issues with, or something's been overlooked for vehicular or pedestrian traffic that could cause danger spots.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just be concerned about pedestrian traffic, seeing that there's so many walkers and there's going to be so many additional people living in the development. I mean, it's a huge population increase.
Um, I'm not sure what the population increase would be. I, I know with the number of units that are proposed, but I do know they also added a, um, another walkway with open areas between the buildings to funnel the people down towards the lake and safely around the lake instead of having to walk across any of the roads. So I actually think they did a pretty good job with separating the buildings and allowing for light space and air and people to, to make their way through the buildings. But you're right, there's to be a lot more people. So I don't, I don't see it as an issue though, because they, they don't have any people moving around the back of the site where trucks and other deliveries would be going on. I'm back to your original comment, Joanne. I think having some public parking space is a really nice idea. That for people who would walk the lake. And I'm, that's, that's another point that might come up in the Board of Appeals meeting.
I was trying to see if anything was designated over by where the cafe is located. And I couldn't see any notes in the parking that were designating the parking for public, for the cafe.
Right.
Which is not.
I couldn't find any either.
Well, maybe it's just whatever's left over, you know, with all the people that, but usually there's priority given to the people who live in a place they need to park because they're, you know, they're paying to live there.
Well, with other developments that have come through my office, I know parking spots are numbered and assigned and sometimes deeded. So um, I don't think, unless they're specifying public access or public spaces, they usually have visitor spaces, but those are also required to have something in the window saying you're visiting a certain unit and everything. So I, excuse me, that's, um, that's a lot more detail than we need to get into, but that's from my experience, what I've seen with multifamily developments such as this.
Right. So maybe we need to mention that, that.
Okay.
Aiden.
Can I just ask something real quick?
Sure.
Do you find, Joanne, that a lot of people park in that lot right now to use the lake?
Yeah, it's pretty full, the parking lot where they're going to build. They're going to put a building where there's a big parking lot today.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I've been there and I've seen cars there. I just didn't know how full it was. So.
Yeah, it's pretty full. Um, there's also a lot of drainage issues there now. Um, I was up there last weekend and after it had rained, there was, you know, like a little mini pond right there in the parking lot. So, you know, it was a wetland. So going to, to, um, on Matt's point about the fill, I, I would expect they would need to fill that with a lot of dirt because they did back in 1957 when they built it originally. They put a ton of dirt in there to build the American Mutual Building. Um, so now they need to add more dirt. Because it's a wetland. It's still a wetland.
Well, it's not all a wetland. Part of it is, but I agree, there's going to be a lot of dirt and fill to, to manage. I mean, most sites like this, the cut and fill calculations are done by the engineers, and then they figure out how many trucks. And I know that's going to probably come up at some point in the ZBA meeting to um, what is the route. And there's one thing I do like about this site, that it is right next to 128, and they can come on and off the ramp without having to go through the town. And that might be one of the conditions for the trucks is that they don't travel through on North Ave or come in from whatever side that they come right off the off-ramp from 128. Um, Megan, did you have any comments or recommendations for the Board of Appeals?
I did. I had a couple of questions/comments. Um, so in talking about the flooding, which is like normally in that back right corner, I just didn't know if Matt or anybody thought, felt like the four to five feet of fill would, raising the site that much would be um, like would, would right, Alec, like be enough for the current flooding situation that happens in that back right-hand corner constantly every time it rains? Because the building is really right up to the edge there in that back parking lot that they're adding in. So I just wanted to make sure that that, we felt like that was being addressed.
Right. I think looking at sheet A-080, it really shows a clean plan. I know it's hard to see, but it shows a clean plan of that existing parking garage and um, the proposed buildings around it. And it, you could see the landscape courtyards. You can see the paved areas for the parking versus the non-paved areas. And I think it would be really interesting too. I wonder what the ratio is and if they do have more paved areas now versus what's there.
Based on the, what I read, it said that there's like a little bit more green space than paved, but it wasn't, it wasn't significant.
I know, and I didn't take the square footage to see, but I'd like to think with the addition of the rain gardens and the landscape courtyards and the drainage system, that it will improve the drainage and less water will be running down towards the lake and more will be running back towards 128. But I'm not sure. And then maybe that's something Matt might have picked up on the plans. They, I couldn't, I couldn't understand. I couldn't figure it out.
Well, that, that's why they're filling so much in order to, you know, control water, to have it seep slowly into the ground and to make sure any water that runs towards the lake has been cleaned off either by settling or running over land or infiltrated. So in order to do that, you need to raise the ground to get that separation from the groundwater right now. So that's why it's being filled so much.
Um, my next question is in regards to the difference between the state wetland buffer versus the 20-foot buffer area versus the 25-foot local no disturb wetland buffer? And where I could find the definition or difference between those three? Or if anybody on the board could help with the distinguished, the distinguished between those three, the different areas. Like when I was looking at the map, I was confused as to those three different pieces because the 100-foot state wetland buffer, there's obviously development over that line area versus the 20-foot buffer and the 25-foot local no disturb wetland buffer.
Right. Um, which plane were you looking at for that? I, which plan gives the distinct lines? Was it on the, the landscape architect's drawings? I can't remember which one it had. Because the landscape architect's drawings talks about the protection and the trees and.
Yeah, if you look at like sheet one has some, some of the descriptions on there, has the, has the 20-foot buffer area and it has the 100-foot wetland buffer. And then I can't, can't remember where the 25-foot local no disturb wetland buffer and description was, but I can, I can look.
No, it's okay. I think that the 25-foot one was in the existing. Um, and then they had the other information in. Um, Matt could probably better answer this. It confuses me as well. And what I've done in the past is I rely on the Conservation Commission and attending their meetings and try to see what they're talking about and how their recommendations. One of my favorite parts of the Boards of Appeal meeting, the ZBA meeting, is when the chair does read the recommendations from other boards. It's good to hear what other boards are saying too. And I'm really hoping the Conservation Commission does pick that up. Uh, Matt, do you know the difference between why there's a 20-foot and then a 25-foot?
Um, so different towns can basically set their own regulations on how they control development within a buffer zone. They need to establish this buffer zone and, and obviously have it published, what their, you know, no disturbance, uh, or, you know, how are their rules set up? So that's why anything within 100 feet of wetlands gives the conservation jurisdiction to have oversight over it. So if all of this development was more than 100 feet from wetlands and Concom would be out of it, uh, when you get into it, it gets a little bit more strict. I, I'm not too up on the state, you know, the state jurisdictional zone and as opposed to the town. But I do know within, I believe it's 25 feet is when the town um, will get involved with no disturbance. So. I didn't explain it too well, but that's roughly what it is.
Explained it better than me. I, 25 is what, so just to recap that, 25 for Wakefield, but the 20-foot line is from the state. So if with this development, it would need to go by the more strict, meaning the 25-foot, which our Conservation Commission will advise on how this development moves forward and how many meetings they have to help prepare these plans to protect the wetlands and make sure nothing's draining. to help prepare these plans to protect the wetlands and make sure nothing's draining in them or draining out of them that that shouldn't be.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. In regards to the snow storage, and I know we made the note right that there was no locations shown or noted on the plans. Is there any way that we can like request more specifics in the documents? It said like if access snow like they will take it off site, but there's no really details around what does like access, like when, when does, when do we hit that snow limit? And then also to like when this is built, right? Where is there any way that we can ask like for more specifics or just more detail around where they're going to currently put the snow?
Yeah, I I'd like that to be one of our recommendations because I'm concerned that if the snow storage is put in a place that's a little too close to the lake and the runoff with all of the chemicals mixed in with the snow melt and everything else then gets pushed and avoids the proposed drainage, but then does move into the soil, which then gets into the lake without any separation and cleansing. To me, that would be an issue. So I think we would want to propose or recommend to the to the Board of Appeals that the plan clearly marks and that the Board reviews in our wording, maybe that's where it comes in. And Matt's been really good at wording this in the past. But it's like the the snow storage and I don't know if we're so concerned about the removal as we are the storage. The snow storage locations on the site should be clearly identified with signage to where this happens. Because even if it's on the plan, the people who are plowing aren't going to have the plans to see where the snow storage goes. So it has to be clearly marked and the snow storage needs to be placed in an approved area by the Conservation Commission. I think that's in a way to leave it.
Yeah.
To the Conservation Commission, but to to make sure it doesn't run off in the wrong direction.
Yeah, I guess what I meant with in regards like the excess of just in regards to like, you know, if we get a winter like we did a couple of years back in just regards like site, like depending on where those locations right are, like in regards to like sightlines and car you know, transport in the parking lot areas or whatever, is that going to cause any issues or situations if the snow gets to be eight feet tall, 10 feet tall?
Right.
Yeah. And you know, that that is a good point because this has been a problem historically with that property. Apparently there has been snow dumped into the lake before. So I think that is something we want to pay particular attention to and note.
My next one was on the transportation report, the transportation impact assessment. To me, the transportation numbers seemed extremely low based off of potential full occupancy of the 485 units.
Right.
And taking into account like that more people are going to be. I think it's everyone's assumption that more people are going to be taking their own forms of transportation post COVID versus mass the mass transit. And so the peak times in the morning peak hour was 135 exiting. And then the evening was 135 entering. And to me, based off of 485 units and then multiple, you know, two bedroom, three bedroom units, that those numbers seemed like extremely low based off of the analysis, like with the lights and the backup and the traffic and the entering and exiting. And I didn't know if anybody else on the board felt like those numbers were were really low. And if there's anything that we can propose or ask or ask to recalculate or I don't, I don't know. It just seemed wildly low.
Well, my experience with these plan, the traffic volume summary is usually where I go right to. And this is table one on page 11. The existing roadway traffic volume summary. And the first thing I circled on it was the 1655 vehicles on average weekday. And then looking at the 24 hour, two hour volume, approximately it lists 192 vehicles per hour during the weekday morning peak hour and 194 vehicle per hour during the weekday evening peak hour. So this, this one page really helps me understand more. But honestly, I don't, when you look at the number of units, is it a ratio that they come up with and how many parking spots and it's always kind of been a mystery to me. I know they look at the the density to see. I don't know, Matt, if you have any experience or Joanne.
The 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 traffic counts always seem kind of low, but from experience, the traffic engineers usually kind of know what they're talking about. So I tend to usually trust them on on things like this. I know one thing it's going to be odd on this site, they're probably doing traffic counts on if the office building were fully occupied and operating. So there may be a little skewed there that, you know, the site is currently vacant. So you may have no cars on certain days and it looks like a larger increase, but they could be calculating it on what should be coming out of there if that building were actually functioning.
Yeah, I know. They said they pulled data from like 2018 based on the fact that the current numbers would be a little inaccurate.
Right.
And then added like a percentage increase. But I don't know. It just seemed I'm scared.
Can I add to that? Because I actually kind of assisted with that. But gave traffic count numbers. They, the way they judge that is like you were saying, 2018, when they've had recent projects come through and they've done traffic counts. I think that's definitely how they take into account to that. I also think we need to think long term. Maybe some of these people are going to be working from home. Maybe I'm just being, you know, you know, optimistic. I hope people go back to work, but be working from home. Something that's always stuck with me is how we look at it longer term of transporting these people to the commuter rail, whether that be a bike share program or something like that. And I know that's not anything our board or, but those are just conversations that we should be having with the ZBA, with developers, having the bike share or any sort of micro transit is really important. So we can avoid those those sort of counts that we're worried about. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thanks.
Thanks, Erin.
Erin.
Any other comments regarding the transportation and their traffic counts report? Okay, so I'm sorry, Megan, did you have any?
I had one more and I know it's not like part of our list of items and I'm, I will be happy to join the meeting and express my opinion. But it was just based off the mixed use development piece of the plans. To me, I was just disappointed to see that there was only 1,100 square feet for a cafe, which is 24 seats, which is very small. And that was the only business in a limited business district and the rest was all residential.
Right. Well, under this permit, they don't need to provide any.
I know, but.
So it is nice that they have a cafe, but I agree, there's a lot of potential here. Bear gardens, everything else, but that's, you're right. It's not for our board to.
Right.
Yeah.
Just wanted to voice my disappointment.
Understood. Yeah. Okay.
That's it.
Sorry.
That was, those were all my bullets.
Okay. So I do see a number of items here, and I think to make this work, I just want to go down a quick list and let's see what could this letter be like drafted to the Board of Appeals? One, we're concerned about the fill. There's a lot of fill. There's a lot of debris, demo debris coming off the site. And there's a lot of fill going on to the site. And to me, that means a lot of trucks. So we want to form our first recommendation around that. That's one. Two, just as a side note, do we want to recommend that the ZBA adds PDFs or an electronic document to their website for the public to view? That would be another part there. The next one was kind of about drainage, but I didn't get Joanne about the and maybe it becomes a bigger thing, a bigger comment that ties into the snow storage that we're concerned about snow storage and drainage. Snow storage that would then melt towards the lake or to the wetlands that could cause issues. And we'd like the Conservation Commission to have a part in that. So I don't know how to really form that one, but that was the third one. And.
I thought I thought you said you wanted to ask the Conservation to have input on the fill and the wetland issue as well.
Yeah, they're going to have that, but I'm trying to figure out how it all works together with the snow storage, the drainage and the conservation. The fill, I think, is a separate one. And Matt, jump in if I think the fill was more about how much is coming back and forth.
Yeah, we just we, you know, we need to just frame this as our, you know, the bullet points that we see that they need to focus on. So the amount of fill going on to the site would be one, I would say, and that they need to make sure that there is a snow management, snow management plan for this site because many sites are developed without any thought that it is winter here and it does snow occasionally and it needs to be managed and it in, as you know, I'm kind of a I'm a little wacky on this that you need to engineer it in properly. You know, if someone's going to be plowing, they're going to push the snow in a certain direction. Make sure where they're pushing it, there's a place to put the snow. If you make it easy enough, it'll be done properly. You don't need to have all kinds of signage pointing to where it needs to go. It's just done naturally. So that, you know, we just need to make sure that they have a, they look at that. And as long as we point this stuff out, I'm sure other people will also point this out too. So we have had some sites where it's been deemed that they need to remove snow when it gets a certain amount. But yet no one ever follows up on that. So that would be great if that happened, but it's, it's, it's followed through 10 years down the road that it needs to be done. I know on the, on the site that the planning board did have oversight on the apartments up on up off Pleasure Island Road there. That was really tight to wetlands there. And basically what we had them put in was a snow melt system. They have the whole place is heated and it just melts the snow. But we also wrote in the decision that things like it will be used, it will be function, you know, you're not just going to install it and then never use it. So we actually wrote in there that it will be used. It will be functioning. It's not, yes, we'll do it, but then never do it, you know, never actually follow through with it. And I do go up there and I do check on it. So that's, I mean, when, when it breaks down someday, I'll be up there telling them they need to fix it. So but the board just needs to set reasonable expectations, engineer improper things and then follow through and make sure it's done.
What about, do they, are they going to use salt up there to melt the snow? I mean, wouldn't that be a concern as well?
I'm sure they use salt. The town uses salt all the way around the perimeter of the lake too. So it, that's just part of what happens in New England in winter. So.
So the salt then can go into the lake.
Sure. All the salt on on Main Street goes right into the lake. So that's, it's not the best thing, but that's what happens right now. Obviously, it's going to be engineered where you'll have rain gardens where that will hopefully filter some of that stuff out, but that's, they'll be following, you know, regulations nowadays to help minimize that.
So we do have, so that's two, one being the fill, two being the management plan. And is there a three about the traffic report or no?
Yeah, I think the traffic report is a separate one.
What would you want it to say, Joanne, as a recommendation?
Well, I mean, that we're concerned about the traffic level because the the 135 exiting and entering doesn't seem to match with the number of units. So I guess how did they come up with those numbers?
So as a board, what would you want to recommend for that?
That we relook at the density that it's too high. That the density, the number of units, it seems to me that there would need to be less units in order to meet the 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 traffic number to meet what they're saying is the anticipated amount of traffic would mean less units.
Well, we don't have control over the number of units. How can we phrase this to where we're more concerned about the factual numbers in the traffic report, the transportation report?
Yeah, I mean, my concerns would be just like the backup, right at the lights, the different turns. And with the, obviously the pedestrian traffic going through that intersection, right? Where the opening is especially on the main roads with those lower estimate numbers, right? And the numbers are probably going to be higher. That needs, right? Those are my concerns, right? Pedestrian traffic, backup at the lights with with those low numbers. It just seems off to me.
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we express concern about the overall size and density of the project?
It's not our, it's not part of our board to recommend that. You can as a private citizen, but it's not something our board would recommend. The same way we were not really recommending about what other boards are doing. We don't recommend things that engineering would or DPW would either.
Yeah, but I don't know how to word it, but.
Well, that's where I'm trying to get to. And I'm looking at figure two from the plan. That's this nice has colored like red and green showing the traffic light at North Ave and the amount of traffic like off the site where that's all going. It just gives a good existing lane use, travel lane width and the pedestrian facilities, but just looking at excuse me, how this is set up, like you have the off ramp and that set of lights. And then we have this turn that would go into Quantico Parkway.
Yes.
Megan, if I'm understanding, that's where the backup could be an issue.
Yeah.
In the morning, turning onto North Ave from the proposed development and in the evening, turning back into the proposed development from North Ave.
Yes.
And if they're coming off of 128, and I know this is very hypothetical, but that whole ramp and everything will get backed up.
Yes.
Okay.
So it doesn't sound like there's going to be any outlet really to Lowell Street. It's mostly going to go to North Ave.
There is. Well, I know that they have the sidewalk and I I don't know if um the existing weekday, eight to nine peak hour traffic. Yeah, they do have from Lowell Street. They have the numbers in here and I know, Erin, I don't want to put you on the spot, but coming off of 195, the Rotary 129 onto Lowell Street, 586 cars go down Lowell Street between eight and nine on a weekday morning. 87 are planned to turn into the proposed development from Lowell Street. There's a couple of other, I mean, that's also including the current business that's there and the new development. I'm sorry, this is existing. Existing. So right now, 586 cars travel down 129, 87 turn in, 160 cars go straight through Quantico Parkway from Lowell Street. That's all of them combined. And from North Ave it looks like wow, it looks like 562 cars. Yeah, I I don't know about the numbers. It's it's kind of a mystery to me. But that's how many number, that's how many cars come off of North Ave onto Quantico. But that's how many number, that's how many cars come off of North Ave onto Quantipower Parkway. There's a line there of five hundred and sixty-two, then forty-five turn into Quantipower Parkway. From south on North Ave. From north on North Ave, a hundred and forty-three cars turn into Quantipower Parkway. So again, this is looking at this existing plan. And then when you look at the existing weekday, so they took all these studies and put together the traffic volume summary. And then when you get into the headed tab, the trip distribution, which is on page twenty. And then it gets into the projected generate, generated weekly morning peak traffic hours. And that is like page twenty-two, twenty-three. And it gets into how many cars they're expecting to come down in addition to. And they have in and out numbers for the site on a weekday morning. A hundred and thirty-five cars going out and fifty-one cars coming in. Ten of those cars coming from North Ave South, twenty-three from North Ave North and from Lowell Street. So that's. Yeah, I mean, if this is your numbers, it looks like on North Ave in the morning. If that's a six, sixty-one and twenty-eight, a twenty-six. So it looks like about eighty-six or so cars will be turning on to North Ave North and South, coming out of there in the morning. That's the projected and going out to Lowell Street. It looks like it's about forty-eight.
It's, it's a little, it's a little more difficult, I think, to get in and out on Lowell Street. That's not like the main access.
No, but that's, that's what they're, they're projecting cars to go and they look at the existing. They look at how many people are there, how, and they take a percentage or a ratio compared to past projects and how they figure that out, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'm sort of forward thinking here, suspecting that there's, if there's going to be more congestion at the North Ave entry and exit, that they may want to re-engineer that area where Quantipower comes into Lowell Street because it's kind of hard to get in and out there right now. It's sort of like a one-way. You have to go around the rotary and all, it's not really.
Before we get into recommending re-engineering things.
Well, I'm not recommending it, I'm just saying that it may become a necessity depending on what the real traffic is.
I think we want, our board, we want to be concerned with is the pedestrians that are walking and crossing around there safe? Are the cars turning in and out of there safe? So I think that's what we're really concerned with, with our board is we want to focus on any of the vehicular and pedestrian access points that could become safety issues.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a concern. Obviously.
Want to word, word this third recommendation point regarding the traffic report?
Well, there's two things. We're talking about the safety of the pedestrians that we're concerned about, right? And then we're concerned about the, the traffic congestion, the amount of traffic.
Are we recommending that a more detailed study is done in certain areas that we're concerned about?
I just don't know how that's going to be done with COVID. And obviously not. Yeah.
Okay. Well.
Um, I just want to bring this up as a town employee. We are definitely looking at traffic in general from a town level, how we do a overall traffic study. So I don't know when that's eventually going to be done, but that's just something to keep in mind that, you know, I know this project can add some more traffic, but I think we're looking at more of a general level. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, well, we can do this with the three items that we have. And I, I would like to add in the PDF one at the end, something like, the board recommends that PDFs posted to the board, ZBA site. So that would be a total of four or three with the PDF recommendation. So the first one would be about the fill. Second one would be about sto- snow storage management plan. And the third one would be about concern on vehicular and pedestrian safety with the additional number of cars and people. So should I draft something up and send it out to everybody and see what you think? We, it's something I could do tomorrow. I'm taking tomorrow off. And I could send it out to, or have Susan send it out to all members of the board. And if you want to just send comments back to me, I can keep revising it and updating it until we have a version that we want to send. And I'd like to send it Monday or Tuesday so they have it in hand. I know they want it by, by Wednesday, but I'd like to get it in if possible by the end of the day, Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like that would work. In terms of the, the PDFs, are you also going to put in the letter that you'd like them posted for public review?
Uh, no, I just want PDFs posted so they can see their current projects that they're reviewing. People won't have to go down to Town Hall to ask for the plans and, and view them there. They can just click on the PDF and review it. So yes, it is.
Anybody can review it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Matt?
So yeah, that, that's good. Now, now that we've gone through that, I, there's a couple of things that maybe we can throw in there as a wishlist that if, if the developer wants to show that they're really trying to sell this, that, you know, obviously beyond the minimum eighteen percent of affordable housing that they're required to do, would be nice if they stepped that up a little bit. Maybe do twenty percent, that would be nice. I also would like, there's, there's huge roof areas on this building.
Yes.
This could be a fabulous solar collection site that could offset quite a bit. I don't see anything in there about that, so they could look at that.
Thank you, Matt.
They could also look at some, you know, some, some water collection for irrigation purposes, which has been one of my pet peeves for years is that we dump all this water in the ground and then we take municipal water and we water the lawns. So I'd love to see finally some of this come to fruition. Again, it's out of our hands that they do it, but we can suggest that to the ZBA, that would be a nice gesture for the developer to give back a little bit.
This is excellent, Matt, and you took three of the ones that I wanted to add. But I'd also like to add light pollution and trees. I would like them also to look at our accepted trees list and choose from that list. And I would also ask them to review any exterior building lighting. And please only use lighting for pedestrian access and safety requirements and not to light the facade of buildings unnecessarily. Unnecessarily lighting of facades really bothers me. And I know, Matt, you might have something to say about that too.
Yeah, I, I don't know, we say it in public though, but yes.
Sorry.
I, obviously, we've been talking a lot about light pollution and things like that. It would be nice if, if all the lights on the building were were somewhat shielded, even the ones on the balconies that they're, they're downlighting, they're not projected out. So people across the lake don't see people's front door, you know, patio lights or balcony lights. So you can only, you know, point out this stuff, hopefully they'll take it to heart.
Are they, do we know if there's any solar heating or solar plant panels planned?
Well, that's what Matt brought up of the roof areas, if there's a solar collector. The, the most, in my experience, the most value to a multi-family unit, and I know it says multi-mixed use, but is domestic hot water. If you can offset the cost of domestic hot water, that's the, the best price increase as far, the best value of return on investment. But if you start to look at how to heat and cool the building, that's a whole different cost and ROI. So, but I, yes, Matt mentioned that, that's a good one to add. And I think the water collection is right in there with the sustainability. Uh, one thing I'd like to add to there that I didn't see is a resiliency plan. Did anybody come across a resiliency plan in there? Meaning what happens when storms get really bad and rip the whole place apart? Is there any resiliency with, meaning usually a plan is, so the the main heating systems and cooling systems of the building are not in the basement in case they get flooded. They're in a place protected more so that they wouldn't have to be replaced if that did happen.
Yeah, that was something Julie requested last time. She thought it would be good, but in terms of whether or not they have plans to do that or not.
I didn't see it in the plans.
Okay.
A lot of times when we're working on projects, it's a separate book now, a resiliency plan. Different parts of Boston near the waterfront are also requiring that now, like in Seaport.
What about the historical commission, I'm sure is going to be concerned with the, the American Mutual Building, documenting what, what is there now and, you know, getting pictures and everything? Is that something we would put into our wishlist or we could put into our wishlist or should we leave that to them?
Good question. I'm not sure.
Uh, that, that might be something we want to ask if CC and F can do.
To document any.
Document the existing building professionally.
Is, Joanne, do you know if there's any historical prevalence of that building?
Oh yeah, it's a historical building.
It is.
Art deco, it's one, yeah, the design, it was a, I forget the architect's name, but yeah, it's a, it's a Ford. It was state-of-the-art at the time.
Okay.
I mean, I'd kind of like to ask why they're, they haven't considered renovating it or if they have considered that.
Right. This is a pretty good wishlist. Megan, anything to add?
No, but I love the ideas.
Okay. It's good. Well, thanks, everybody. I want to make sure, I'll have some time again tomorrow to pull together number one, number two, number three, the PDF and then the wishlist. And I'll get that out to Susan and distribute to the board, copy Erin as well. And then if there's anything that you see you want to edit, I, word helps me with my spelling, that's not great. So, but if, if you do see anything grammatically or anything you want to reword it and it's, it's going to all sound a little too complex. So I'm all for helping, if you can help to simplify the wording, would be great too.
Uh, my, my suggestion is, uh, clear and concise is usually what's remembered more, so.
Right, Matt, you did mention as bullet points, so that's something I'll work towards is more of a bullet point. So I think about how it will be read at the meeting and how the impact would be felt. And, and the clear and concise path is definitely the right one. Okay. That's good. Got a lot done in an hour. Thank you very much for your time and and looking through all these. I know one night I did fall asleep with it like, like on me. Just like, it's just too much, but, um, it's, you know, I, and I don't know how you all feel about it. I do like looking at the paper plans instead of the screen after all day looking at the screen. So it is nice sometimes to take some markers and mark things up. I can, I don't mind printing out just the sheet or two that I need from the PDF. That's, that's how I usually operate now, so. All right, unless there's any other comments or questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Anyone seconding that?
I will second it.
All right, all in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Joanne? Yep, same here. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.